With liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Right, please join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to come together tonight to talk about business important to our community. It's a special time of the year, Father, as we celebrate the birth of Jesus Christ. Remember that is the reason for the season, Christmas, the Mass for Christ. Father, we ask that you be with those who are in our community who are sick, those who are recovering from surgery, those who are going through treatment for illnesses. I say that you be with them and their family at this time. Up your arms around them and help to heal their bodies. Be with those, Father, who have lost loved ones here recently. Tough time of the year to go through when you've lost a loved one recently, so we ask that you be with those persons also. And we'd like to, Father, those men and women who are serving our country in military bases and installations all across this world. Father, be with us, counsel, be with the staff, and be with our citizens as we talk about these issues important to our community. Your son's name, amen.
Thank you, Gray. Next on the agenda is petitions and comments. That's time on the agenda for anyone to address the council tonight on tonight's agenda. If you wish to address the council, go to the podium, state your name and address.
Atop the agenda. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add one item for closed session. That would be for purposes of discussing a personnel issue, and I believe our attorney can give us the statutory side for that.
Yes, that's 143-318-11A6.
Okay, thank you, sir. And if the council will agree to that amendment, I will move that we adopt the agenda otherwise as is.
Motion, either second.
Second.
All the people up by the center. Next, we have presentations. Recognize Tony Call. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I'm gonna make you stand up here and shut it out.
Sure, I'll stand behind you.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, we want to take time out of the meeting today to recognize Mr. Anthony Chalk, otherwise known as Tony. He is preparing for his retirement in just about a week or so. December 31st will be his last day with the town of Garner. He's been with us for 29 and a half years, so he's been a fixture around town. You know you're getting old when you're referred to as a fixture.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I'm gonna give you some highlights about Tony's career. He started as an engineering co-op in May of 1984. And I have no idea what an engineering co-op is.
A unpaid intern.
Okay, all right. Hired full-time as an engineer in 1989, and then he was promoted to assistant town engineer in 1997, September of that year, and then promoted to town engineer in February 2014. Some of the performance notes that he's received over the years is Tony is a valuable asset to the town of Garner and the engineering department, something we all know. We don't have to doubt that. Tony is the role model, is a role model for seeking win-win solutions. As you know, he deals with contractors and the public a lot of times, and he has to balance helping them out with their project versus enforcing town regulations, so we appreciate that. Tony uses his listening skills astutely, and I think he has to hold back sometimes, but he has tremendous restraint when it's called. He treats the town resources as if they were his own, and I can attest to that, and I've seen him in action out in the field, and he does really care about all the things that he's given purview over. High respect for his work ethic, his integrity, and his common sense, and Tony's stalwart position on what I do for one, I must be prepared to do for all demonstrates his integrity and determination. So I think that says a lot about Tony. His previous supervisor probably said all of those things about him, so I can attest to that with my time of working with him here in Garner. 1989, when he was hired permanently, got a few interesting facts just to put it in perspective of how long he's been here.
Long time ago, right?
Yeah. Gas was 97 cents per gallon. A postage stamp is 25, was 25 cents. Now they're about 97 cents each, right? I think they've... Ribeye steak was 3.79 per pound, and I mention that because he loves to cook, and he loves steaks, and grilling out, and those type of thing. Toyota launched the Lexus. Hurricane Hugo came through. Popular films were, and you'll have to tell me which one of these were your favorite, When Harry Met Sally. Driving Miss Daisy. Okay, all right. And License to Kill, an action movie, so, yeah, all right, all right. He's really into music, loves music, and goes on rock and roll or...
Americana music cruise.
Cruises, yeah, rock and roll cruises. Okay. So the popular musicians in the day were Duran Duran. I don't even know, I don't know how to pronounce that.
Depeche Mode.
Depeche Mode, no? It's not...
That's not his cup of tea.
The Bangles?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not bad. And your favorite New Kids on the Block?
Absolutely.
You can show us some of the moves later.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I have several other notable events from 1989, but since it's his retirement, we're here to celebrate him, I guess I won't mention those. I have a few fond memories of 1989 myself, so I won't... Okay, all right, all right, I won't, okay, all right, I won't mention those, all right, all right. No, on behalf of the town and the staff and everybody from the public that's worked with you over the years, we really appreciate your work ethic and your dedication and everything you've done for the town to have grown up here and gone to school here and then become the town engineer. I know he takes a lot of pride in his work and being, you know, employee of the town of Garner here in his hometown, so we really appreciate that, and we have a token of our appreciation for you.
Thank you, sir.
You can use on your cruise and whatever you'd like, and maybe share with your family, but maybe, maybe not.
I'm gonna turn it over to John Hodges to say a few words.
Well, I only got to work directly with Tony for the last four of those 29 and a half years, and a lot of that time, Tony was, in addition to his regular job as the town engineer, Tony was helping design and manage the construction of nearly $35 million in bond projects, and that's not something that everyone gets to do during their career, especially buildings like our police department and this town hall are some lasting reminders of his tenure here with us and things that I hope that he'll take a great deal of pride in. There's just one other project we didn't quite get done during his tenure here, but rest assured, he will, he has us on the right track to get that one finished, and he will be a guest of honor at the ribbon cutting for that one. So as we've worked on these projects together, I think we've learned a lot together. We've learned some of the things to do, probably some of the things what not to do, but all these are lessons that I think are positioning us very well for the other projects like this that we will have in the future and at the rate of growth we're having. We know we will have those, and we're much better prepared to do those through the work that we've done together with Tony's leadership in these things over the last four years. Tony has been, as Rodney said, he's been a valuable resource to town staff, to this council, to citizens, and to our development community, and I think all of those groups are gonna miss Tony and miss the opportunity to work with Tony, and he leaves quite a huge void here at the town, but he leaves a bigger legacy, and so for that, we thank him for everything he's done over his time here. Thank you, Tony.
You can introduce your family and say a few words.
Yeah, just, I want, just a couple that are very brief that I wrote down.
Take your time, Tony.
But first, my wife's still getting over the part that Rodney said where I listen, I have listening skills. She's still getting over that part right now.
Put some fluff in there to make it sound...
Well, first, I just want to thank the town of Garner for the opportunity to work here for 29-plus years and for the last five years as town engineer. Obviously, I want to thank my family, my wife's Amy's here, my daughter Ellen. I'm hoping that my daughter Emily's able to watch the live stream if she figured that out in California. Obviously, without their support and patience with me, it would have been a lot more difficult 29 and a half year tenure. I'd also like to thank a couple of people. I'd like to say thank you to Frank Powell for hiring me back in 1989, and to Todd Hardy for telling me about the job opening. Todd was a good friend, and he's the one that told me it was coming up. I've been privileged to work with great people here at the town who've set up a framework for the growth that Garner's experiencing now, and I think that that framework was truly laid over the past 20, 20-plus years to where we are now. I want to thank the people in the engineering department. We're not a large department, but our staff always does their best to meet the challenges that working in a small department present. I couldn't have done it without them. And I just wanted to close by saying that when I came here in 89, Rodney, one thing that was there, and we've talked a little bit about it with some of the announcements, but we were expecting to experience tremendous growth with the construction of the RJR Nabisco site at Greenfield. That was gonna double the tax base of this town. Obviously, that didn't happen, unfortunately, but with the activity and interest that the town has seen in the past few years, it does feel like that that optimism is back with the community again, and I hope it continues. And I just want to say thank you again for, you know, for letting me work here, so.
I told you, this point, I want to shake your hand, too.
All right.
Come on by.
I'll do that.
And then we'll give him applause. Take your time, Tony.
I thought we were gonna get a chance to roast him, too.
I was gonna say Gray wants to do a little roasting, and I think Ken does, too.
Roast. Well, I don't know if mine would be in the classic fashion of roasting, since I don't know enough things about Tony that I could tease him about. I would say that I think I met his lovely wife before I ever met Tony. She and I served on a committee together, and I think at some point early on in my knowing her, she alluded to having a very, a very nice husband, and of course, I met Tony sometime later, and that proved to be true. And so on a more serious note, Tony, I would say to you that it's been my pleasure as a council member to work with you, enjoyed working with your predecessor, Frank, whom I knew before I knew you, I believe. But at any rate, I agree with you. I think the town of Garner is well positioned as we move forward. Haven't accomplished quite all the, all the projects, but they're all in the mix, so thank you. Enjoy your retirement. You've earned it. 29 and a half years is a good run, so I hope to see you around the neighborhood. Thank you.
Like Ken, I met Tony's wife before I met Tony, many, many years before I met Tony, and I always had a good impression of him because she never told me that he said, "Don't you buy any more Tupperware." So when I came, became involved in the local government here, my opinion of Tony just got better. Really appreciate all your hard work and your dedication to the town.
Tony is like me and many others that grew up here in Garner and still live in Garner. One of the differences is that Tony worked almost his whole career in the town of Garner, for the town and in the town, which is different. I mean, he grew up in Cloverdale, he went to high, went to school here, graduated from Garner. He even graduated from college in Wake County, even though he doesn't claim that school, but anyway, he didn't, he didn't go far out of Wake County.
I claim the education.
I call the education, but that's not who he pulls for. But that's, that's different than a lot of folks in that he's watched Garner grow like I have from, you know, when we were in high school, we had graduating classes of 300, 350 people, now they're graduating 600, 700, 800 kids in school, and both his daughters went to school here, graduated from Garner. And I also tell you how involved Tony is because I go to church with he and Amy. They've been members of Garner United Church for many years, and Tony's been very involved in, in the church, and served in many capacities and done a very good job at that, too. So not only is he active and does work with the town, he's active in the community and has been for many years, and will continue to be so, I'm sure. I see both of them most every Sunday, bump into one of them, because Amy has volunteered many hours at church also, so, anyway. Congratulations. I know that in your semi-retirement, I know you'll find something to do, but I know he'll still be pulling for his targets, doesn't matter where he's at and what he's doing. He'll still be pulling for, for his team. He's, he's died in the oil like blood, there's no question about that, so enjoy your retirement.
Tony, you had to... It started a bad time when I came along because to have a, to be an engineer in your own right and head of a, head of a department, and then get a council member that's an engineer that has his own ideas about things, you've handled, quite frankly and truthfully, you've handled all of that elaborate that I offer from this side of the desk, you've handled it well. But also, there's another thing that we share in common is that having worked for the same place for a long time, and you, you develop a lot of friends, and when you, as much as you plan for it, it is tough to leave. It even takes a while to start using the word retirement. It took me a long time to say I have retired, because for the longest time, I felt like I quit, and that's not it at all. It just comes a time when it's, you've been, we've been carried along on a trip, and it's time for somebody else to take a ride. And, but my hat's off to you because, yes, you had a, you had to put together everything that you ever learned from the, from the public side of the engineering when, when the bond referendum came along, and it all came flooding almost at one time, but I can't imagine how many contracts. I wouldn't doubt, but what, there's 30-plus contracts that came out as a result of the, of the bond referendum, and managing all of those, the little ones sometimes can be just as difficult as the big ones, but my hat's off to you. Congratulations on a successful career, and enjoy your retirement, and hope you get to do some things that you and Amy want to do and on your time schedule.
Thank you, sir. Thanks to you.
I'll echo what everybody said, but this town, this county, this state, and this nation is a better place because of you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Mayor, I believe we're gonna have an opportunity for his friends, family, colleagues to wish him a farewell on Thursday at 2:00. So if anybody's listening and wanna do that, feel free, come by town hall.
Very good. Consent agenda, there's eight items. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Before we do that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove the minutes from October 16th, and review those, and we'll get those back on a subsequent agenda.
Everything with consent agenda excluding pulling the minutes from October 16th on the first item, correct? So maybe we could approve the eight items on the consent agenda.
Take it. Folks, a discussion, all in favor, vote, I say an aye. All right. All the way. Okay, number one on the public hearing, half of the town. It's public hearing, I'm open public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am here to present the general use rezoning for 109 and 111 Purvis Street. Case number is Z1805. The applicant and owner for this rezoning is Lee F. Carroll. Location, as I mentioned, is 109 Purvis Street and 111 Purvis Street. The size of the track is about .93 acres. We are here today for the public hearing. The project will go to Planning Commission at their January 23rd meeting, and we'll come back to you guys in February for action. The purpose, the applicant owns two contiguous parcels on Purvis Street, 109 and 111, and as I mentioned, it's about a .093, or .93 acre site that is currently zoned residential R9, and applicant's requesting to rezone to Central Business District. The applicant also owns two other contiguous parcels to the north along West Main Street, which are already zoned Central Business District, so this rezoning would really provide the owner more flexibility to develop all four contiguous parcels under the Central Business District zoning. Here is a site map of the location, so it's along Purvis Street, just south of West Main, across from the Garner Rec Center site. In regards to the adjacent zoning and land use, to the north, we have Central Business District, which is kind of the full bloom coffee roasters location. The south, we have R9, single-family detached. To the east, we have Central Business District zoning as well, which is the Garner Water Tower, and then to the west, we have Central Business District, which is the Garner Rec Center. In regards to recent rezoning in the area, the Central Business District rezoning for the Garner Rec Center is the most recent rezoning we have in the area. As I mentioned, the existing zoning classification is R9, and the requested zoning classification is Central Business District, which is intended to provide for and maintain the Main Street Business District, and this would have allowed the four contiguous parcels to be developed under CBD zoning. We've highlighted the uses for the CBD category. I'm not going to go through all of them, they're in your packet. If you have any questions about any of them in specific, I can answer them. In regards to the plan consistency, on the 20, on the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map designates this site, both of the sites as Town Center category, and the Town Center category is intended for both traditional downtown core development and other concentrations of development near transit stops, established government uses, and other mixed-use locations as part of the Town Center designation. The uses in buildings are located on small blocks with streets designated and designate, designed to encourage pedestrian activity, and buildings typically stand a minimum of two stories in height with residential units above storefronts reserved by rear-loading, shared, and/or on-street parking, if that's the use. In regards to council action, the staff will provide a recommendation at the January 23rd Planning Commission meeting, and after conducting the public hearing, staff recommends referring the rezoning application to Planning Commission for their review at the January meeting. The applicant is also here if you have any questions for the applicant.
Council members, have comments, questions?
Got a question for Hit. When the site plan comes back, then we'll talk about the, if there are any restrictions on the specific uses, or is that an appropriate subject for this particular time?
It is an appropriate subject for this time because once you've allowed the general use rezoning to be changed to Central Business District, any of the uses outlined in this table, the staff report provided to you under Central Business District, would be allowed. So when a site plan comes in, then it just becomes more of a meeting the requirements of the UDO's town policy and plans. It wouldn't be a zoning question at that point.
So any of these uses here are, would be, would be allowed?
Yes.
And you would support any of those?
Yes.
Anyone else?
Because it is a general use rezoning, there are no conditions on it.
Okay, the councils?
I have a question. The meeting, the Planning Commission meetings is January 23rd of Wednesday. Is that, is Planning Commission on a new cycle of meetings now? I know that was discussed at one time, but is this just because it's something special in January?
No, so the Planning Commission meetings is moving to the third Monday of every month from January, and because January's, the third Monday falls on MLK, which is a holiday, the following day is the council meeting, so the Planning Commission in, for, just for January, got moved to that Wednesday, but then it'll be the third Monday.
I knew it was talked about the third Monday, but I wasn't sure, and saw the Wednesday, it kind of really threw me off, but yes, okay, thank you.
One other thing you mentioned, Hit, that in passing was, you might have been reading from it, and I didn't follow it, I just heard it and lost it in the shuffle. Is there any restriction on the height of buildings along Main Street?
I think in the UDO, there might be a Main Street overlay that might have some height restrictions. If, I'm not quite sure about that part of the UDO.
Okay, if it is, if that's what the case is, I was just wondering, because I'd, well, that's a subject for another time, but if you'd put that in, put that in your mind, and I'd love to have, follow up on that discussion at another time.
I think what I was reading off of was the comp plan's designation of what the Town Center category intended uses are like, and that's where it says that it are typically a two-story building with residential units if there is storefronts underneath, and that's just, if that's the type of use it goes under.
Okay, anyone in, Mr. Carroll, you want to say something? You may speak now if you'd like.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lee Carroll, and I'm the project at hand, and this has been something of a dream for me for quite a long time. I started that dream roughly over 20 years ago, and I think I can proceed with it, and I hope I have the support to do it. If there's anything I can answer, any questions now, be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Hearing the last, I'm gonna close the public hearing, call for a motion.
Proponent? Or not, I don't know if they're proponents, but they did want to speak and ask questions.
Did you want to speak?
Hello, everyone. My name is Rodrick Hinton. I live in High Point, North Carolina, which is the furniture capital of the world. I do have interest in a particular location along Purvis Street, which is 117. I'm the overseer of that property, so I just wanted to ask the gentleman, what is the ultimate intent of the zoning change? That's really my only question.
We need to record it, Lee.
As y'all know, we've presently got the project on Main Street going, and I hope to submit the plans to that for the first week of January for the planning department, but I want to put my business on Purvis Street, which has carried the flow of Main Street in that direction, possibly multiple more, more buildings, possibly apartments above. We're just not real sure yet because we got to see what all the setbacks and stuff like that's gonna be like before I can do a site plan.
So you're essentially talking about just reorienting and expanding your business? Reorienting and expanding your business?
So moving your offices from Main Street on to Purvis Street and then redoing the property on Main Street is what you've been talking about doing for some time?
That's correct.
Okay. So it would be, it would have some outside storage, which like it currently does, your vans and so forth, but it's not...
It should be all inside.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Yeah, I'm going to close the public hearing. Refer this to the Planning Commission. New and old business. Many reports. Energy reports.
Mr. Mayor, you have Garner info in front of you, as well as there's a calendar there for your January, if you have any questions about anything there. Then also a financial report, if you have any questions about that. Wanted to mention a couple of things that have happened over the last couple of days. Just a couple of things of note that have happened over the last few days. And I think I got it mixed up here somewhere. The police held its annual shop with a cop this past weekend, and that was a success. If you, as you probably are aware, that's a program where the police department, they basically adopt usually more than one family. And they'll take the kids shopping, and they receive donations. They collect money, they collect items, whether it be clothes or toys or whatever. And they donate that to the family. So we want to commend them on another successful year of doing that and thank the community for their support with that. And then the veterans, and I may need some help with this one, Rick, because I didn't bring my reminder note here. But the Veterans Association, they had an event this past weekend out at the, yeah. And I'm going to let Rick give you the details.
Yeah, it's a tag team, so good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. So as you might know, it was a little soggy on Saturday morning. But the, some town staff and Tim Stevens and representatives from each of the branches of our military were out at the memorial. And they held their, I think it's the third annual wreath laying and Gold Star Tree Ceremony out there. And, you know, it was a pretty moving event. And those, the wreaths and the tree will be out on display throughout the holiday season. So just wanted to call the public's attention to that as well.
Good work.
Thanks, Rick. The last thing I have is I'm going to pass out a copy of the town's audit report that was just completed by Malden and Jenkins. As you may recall, we switched auditors over the last year. And this, so this would be this company's first year completing our audit. Some auditors in the past have done a presentation in front of council, but that's not something they typically do. So we present the report here for you to review. One reason we're giving it to you tonight is because we do plan to apply for the GFOA Award for Financial Reporting. And we do need to get the application in by the end of the, end of the month. So we just wanted you to have a chance to take a look at this. And then there's also a copy of the management letter that goes along with it. I can pass those down also. Hopefully, that's enough. And I will just briefly go through and point out a couple of things within the audit report of note on page. And then I also would add that we have Finance Director Pam Wertham here in case there's any, any really difficult questions. I'll turn it over to her. But on page four, under opinions, they state, "We have issued an unmodified audit report," which, for example, that means that it's a clean opinion, which is a good thing for us. And then turning over to five toward the bottom of the page, where it talks about government-wide full accrual and financial statements. It says that the report and their findings, it finds that we have reported a net position or equity of $71,386,000. That's basically all of our assets, pretty much like a net worth. A substantial element of the net position is composed of a net investment in capital assets in the approximate amount of $60,000, $60 million. So that's, that's our assets. And the $71 million is more like your net, our net worth, which would include equity, right? Restricted net position amounts to approximately $4,143,000, leaving unrestricted net position at $7,231,000. So a lot of numbers, a lot of financial lingo there. But it's generally saying that the town's in a good financial position with our assets and with our liabilities, and leaving us with the net worth of comparable net worth position of $71 million. Private sector, we use net worth, but for public sector, it's net position, so. And then turning over to page 14. They're required to, if they find something that they would consider a significant deficiency, they're required to report that as a material weakness. So they did have one finding, or this said, we reported several findings, but they really only found one material weakness. And the middle of that page, where it says, "Item cited in town's financial statement as material weakness" has to do with retainage payable and the way we were booking that. We, you know, when we do construction projects, and the contractors put in a pay request per the contract, we keep a retainage from that. And we were not booking that as a liability. Typically, by the end of the project, we end up not paying it all out anyway. If, you know, if there's some money owed to us, or if there's liquidated damages, or, you know, whatever the case may be, if it comes in under, under budget or whatever. But that middle paragraph talks about that liability for retainage and how we will record that. We haven't been doing it any different than we have in the past. It's just some auditors have different ways of reporting things and different findings. So they felt like that was a material weakness. So in the future, we'll, we'll log that in as a liability because there's a potential we would have to pay that out at the end of the project, so. So that's not, not a, not a bad thing. And so that's pretty much it. You can read through that and have any questions. Pam, did you have anything you want to add or say about the audit? All right. And so you can take a look at that and see if you have anything for us. Yes? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. You do not have the full audit report in front of you because we have not had a chance to get it printed and bound. But as soon as we can get that done, you will have a full copy of that for your records. This is more of a summary of what they found and a summary of the statements themselves.
And I did skip, oh, I'm sorry.
What are you going to have to be awarded that Rick received?
I can, I don't, yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to remember what it was. But I'll, I'll address that in a minute. I did leave out one thing on page seven that would be of interest to you. It talks about fund balance. And this is on the expenditure side of, for 2018, the total fund balance was 97.3%. And unassigned fund balance is 63.3%. So that's on the expenditure side. All right. So that's the relative percentage of fund balance as compared to annual expenditures for each of the past, well, that shows four years, each of the past four fiscal years, so. All right. And award that Rick received? I know Communications has received several awards
May I get some raise on that?
Over the last few months. And we did mention several communications awards at our employee recognition program last week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a number of people were responsible for, for some work that was honored recently by one of the statewide organizations a couple of weeks, two, three weeks ago now. We got a first-place award for a video that Adam worked on along with John Sheeran and Megan Thornton in Parks and Rec to promote facilities and parks, kind of a, kind of a commercial, almost-type video. A very great, a great video. It's online, you can find it. We got a couple second-place awards, too, for the Amazon news release and announcement. And then I guess the Garner Update newscast with Arlie also got a runner-up award. A lot of people work on that stuff, too.
I thought since there was a big crowd here, we'll try to talk about it a little bit. Thank you, Rick. Mr. Attorney, have anything?
I don't.
Counselors, let's start with Buck.
All righty. For the record, I did want to follow up on, perhaps sometime in the future, somebody revisit the downtown overlay, in particularly with respect to height, building height, and see if there's any need to readdress that with, hopefully, there be instances in the coming years where people will want to redevelop in downtown. And I'm wondering if height restriction is, is something we would, we would need to address. And the reason I bring it up, I was associated with an area close to the heart of downtown Raleigh. And they imposed a site limitation on us and to either three or four stories and immediately adjacent to us. People could go for seven or eight stories. And that certainly changes the value of your property. And so I'll just, I'm not trying to grandstand it. It's, it's an item that just happened to be mentioned. I think it's appropriate for us to discuss it at a, at a, at a work session sometime in the future. Second thing is, if you would bear with me, and if you all would scroll down to page 70 on the agenda. Excuse me, on the agenda package, page 70. I've had many different people, and this is probably not news to any of you, but it was to me, that I've had several people ask me about this, and I said, "I have no idea what you're talking about." Have you arrived there yet? Look at the permit number. Well, on that particular page, it's about three or four down. But at 229 Timber Drive, somebody has drawn a, pulled a permit in the name of Big Ed's Restaurant. So for those folks that have asked me about when is Big Ed's coming to town, I can't tell you, but a permit has been applied for and been granted. And Big Ed's is coming to 229 Timber Drive. And I'm assuming that's where?
Post office is. Post office is.
Yeah, where the post office is and adjacent to Food Line.
Yes.
Anyhow, that's good news, and that's all I have.
Kennedy, did you say page 70?
Page 69 in the printed agenda, the fourth item down.
I was on page 70 on mine.
69 on the, by the page number, 70 on your laptop.
It's hard to see which of your pages. Anyhow, if you look, looking to the right, it's the one that's got $186,950 total cost.
Bottom right-hand corner says page 69. Scroll up, it's the second one up.
It is on page 69, okay. All right, that's.
But on our, in our agenda package, it's page 70 based on the computer. I mean, it says right beside it, 6970.
It says so.
Okay, I was just looking at the bottom, yeah, fine. At the bottom of page, it says page 69. That's what confused me. I'm sorry, I'm easily confused by these things sometimes. Yeah, that's great news, Buck, thank you.
I'm done.
Right.
Don't have anything right now, Mr. Mayor. I'll, it pops back in my mind, I'll let you know, thank you.
Okay, Kathy.
Yes, there are a couple of things. The Train Depot on the Garner Road side, on the lower-left side, there's a piece of siding that's missing. It can, are we going to get that fixed?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it fixed this week. Yeah.
All right.
It's where the last rainstorm caused some siding to come off because it's.
And I'd say over the past month, maybe a little bit longer than that, there have been three different occasions in the early morning hours where it sounded like a transformer has blown over in the old downtown area. Do we know anything about that or have any reports? We haven't had, I think, once or twice the lights flickered. But most recent was this morning. And it just sounds like it went out, you know, a big loud bang, and then nothing happened. Anything going on that's causing that?
I have, nothing's been reported to me. I don't know of anything. I don't know if any other staff has heard anything about that. Your consistent time, Ms. Behringer, that you're here.
It's usually, I'm going to say it's usually about seven or eight.
Okay.
Ken.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on what our town manager mentioned regarding the police, what's it called, shop? Shop with the cop.
Shop with the cop.
Yeah. In fact, I spoke to a lady today who, who works at the target, at the checkout area. And she was there when, when they all came through. And she was just fascinated by, by that process. I don't think she'd heard about it before. But she said that those who were observers and those who participated wished to commend the police for the, for the good work they did. So that's coming from a community member or an employee from out there. So wanted to just mention that. Couple of other things, not related necessarily, but I'm looking at our calendar for June, excuse me, January of 2019. I know I'm going to be away on the 29th work session, so I'll ask the council's indulgence to excuse me for that. And also, actually, on the following Monday on that February, I don't like to miss regular meetings, but I will be away for that as well. So I hope you'll excuse me for that. I guess we all notice certain road conditions when we drive on them on a regular basis. There's a, what seems to me to be sort of an increasing pothole on Avizburgh Road just after you cross over Timber headed towards Lake Benson Park. I think maybe, I don't know if the bad weather sort of exacerbated the problem there. But it's not getting any better. And if you hit it just right, it's kind of problematic. So if somebody could look at that and maybe make some repairs early on, that would be nice. And the only other thing I would mention, and I commend the mayor and his fellow mayors, last night was the occasion of the Mayor's Association Dinner held over in Wake Forest. It was a festive occasion. And one of the reasons I like that, in addition to the fact that all the people from the different municipalities are recognized who are there, it gives people like me a chance to sort of reconnect with some of our other elected officials from other townships. And it's just, just a nice evening. They usually move it around some. And the Renaissance Center over in Wake Forest, if you haven't been to it, it's a very nice place, has a unique history itself, a place that the town bought. But thanks for the mayor for inviting those of us who could go along. It was a neat evening, thank you. I think that's all I have.
We're here for a closed session.
Mayor, I move we get a closed session, General Statute 143.318.11A5 to discuss possible real estate acquisition, the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate issues. And per what the attorney noted earlier, for a personnel issue also. So two different items in closed session.
Second that, was that made in the form of a motion? Are we in closed session?
Need to, all in favor?
All in favor. All right. All right, we're now, we're in closed session.
Move we go back into regular session, Mr. Mayor.
Those discussion, all in favor of vote, by Senate?
All right.
All right, Greg, give the board.
The council discussed possible real estate acquisition and also a personnel issue, and no, no action was taken on either item. Mr. Mayor, move that we adjourn.
Second.